Morning, everybody. Sorry we're starting a little bit late. It's my fault. I apologize. But we're gonna start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll have Commissioner Coyle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners' May 11, 2023 meeting. I'm gonna do attendance. We have Chuck Nickerson, fresh back from his conference, Kivela, Allison, Commissioner Coyle, Commissioner Godu, myself in the room. And Zoom, we have Jude Gates, Kathy Stacey, Jason Smith. I have the sheriff and Catherine Mann. And I think that's it. So we're gonna start the meeting with the consent agenda.
We are moving right along this week. I move to approve the May 4th public, non-public meeting minutes and the May 4th, 2023, public hearing minutes.
Sorry, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any additions or subtractions or anything? No? Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Onto payroll.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of $1,316,893.55 for the period ending May 6, 2023.
Sorry, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion there? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, then we're onto liaison reports. Ask Commissioner Godu if he has anything.
I have nothing today.
Oh, I've got a lot, so I'll make up your time. Let's see, big changes in long-term care. CMS has ended, especially particularly as it relates to COVID. CMS has ended the public health emergency. What does that mean for us? It means there's not gonna be any more transmission data first. It means that there will be no more masks in the assisted living facility for visitors or staff. So I, that is like such a big change. You know, we've seen some of the, some of the residents say they want to see people's faces. We had a resident come to the public hearing and talk just about that. Now, it's so nice to see people's faces in here. So we know that it was for the protection of everyone. It's nice to see that progress, that transition, and it's, it's marks a big change, a lot of progress. Otherwise, FSA is here doing some, doing some review. And we also have, next week is nursing, nursing home appreciation week, so that would be nice to celebrate. And we all, I think most people know, we have the Primex Conference next week, starting Tuesday. And some members of long-term care will, staff will be there. It's good for everybody. I think we all benefit from it in terms of learning about exposure and liabilities, so. Chuck has just gone back from a junk, I mean, conference. That was a nod to Tom. That was a nod to Tom, no. But these conferences are really valuable, and I have no doubt that Chuck was still burning the midnight oil with sending emails and doing work while at the conference, because we are in budget season. And there's never any question about Chuck's work ethic, so we appreciate all he does for finance, in finance, because there is such a hub in terms of, that impacts all the other departments. This week is Corrections Officer Appreciation Week, and it has been quite a start to the week. So right now, the jail population is at 145. There was a major incident yesterday where a, someone, an individual was arrested and brought to the jail. There was exposure, exposure to fentanyl that she had. And three inmates were ultimately hospitalized and five staff members were, including, had to be Narcaned and brought to the hospital. So we had eight ambulances here yesterday. It was a critical incident. There had, were a number of, really, it's amazing, the correctional officers really rallied to the case, rallied and really stepped up. Some administered Narcan to, and offered aid to other officers. The Sheriff's Department came down and were incredibly helpful, bringing to both investigate, offer aid, and bring down the, the dog to make sure to sniff out for any other drugs. It was a group effort, and thankfully, everyone is doing well. But quite an ordeal. So thank you to everybody, the help from Sheriff's Department, all the work at Corrections, Superintendent Henry for managing. He was, made sure that we got cleanup crew. He was here very late last night, making sure everybody was, that everything would be decontaminated. And again, was here at this morning, because this morning I went in, as part of Corrections Week, I spoke to the COs just to give our appreciation from the commissioners, and you know, 6:00 AM, he was here. So thank you to everybody's efforts, and that concludes my report.
Yeah, thank you very much. For me, I'm just gonna, I'll let my departments say that when we go into the department's conversation. We'll let everybody know that I did, I think I had mentioned last week or the week before that I had asked Representative Bose to help us out with EverSource. And my understanding is, he messaged me yesterday to say that they had talked to, I guess they, EverSource has now talked to Revision to get that application going. So yeah, I haven't confirmed that yet. We'll confirm that. But anyway, that's good news. We'll get back to it all in. And then I'm just gonna say that I, I attended most of the, you know, most of the, the budget sessions with the delegation. I did not attend Kathy Stacey's, because hers is all revenue. It's all about money, and I think she can handle that. But not to say that anybody else couldn't, but I just wanted to be there in case there was questions. Everything went very, very smooth. Ninety-nine percent of it went very smooth. I will say that I'll let you know on the Sheriff's Department, there may be an ask from the delegation for some additional money. That's, that'll be strictly up to the delegation. Scott Wallace will be handling that. It's probably just what my fellow commissioners used to know. It's probably about an $85,000 add. And then there were some questions last week in, on the Commissioner's budget from Representative Mills. And a little hiccup, nothing major, but I will share with you, there's probably, it just really looks, it depends on how you view things, but I'm sure I can smooth it out with everybody. It had to deal with part of the, the benefits side of the Commissioner's budget. And so anyway, we'll, we'll straighten that out. I can talk offline or, or I can talk in non-public if you guys want later. It's up to you. And then the only other thing is, when we get to HR's budget, there was a question about conferences, and Representative Mills wanted to, a deeper dive into conferences, which I find, I find kind of funny, because here we are talking about the 2024 budget, and he wants to concentrate on past stuff, which i- in my mind, that's what the Commissioner's job is. It's not the delegation's job to, to go into that, but whatever. I mean, it is what it is. So that's the small little hiccup there, but I, I don't really foresee it being anything major. And that's the end of my, we don't have data, sorry. We're gonna go into the lien release, real property, and write off the remainder of debt. I just, I just wanna re- preface this by saying that, and I'm gonna ask my fellow councils how they remembered it. I thought there was two liens on the property, but I'm finding out there may be three, so we gotta, I don't know what that's about, but anyway. How did, Commissioner, how did you remember it all?
There were originally three liens. My understanding was two were not properly placed.
Okay.
So what we're dealing with, with respect to the property is just one lien on that particular property. So.
How did you remember?
Commissioner Godu wasn't here when we initially started this.
Oh, but he's, he's dealing with the.
Recent discussion that I remember was there was only one.
Right.
That we were actually, that we had a lien on. I, I recall that there were others that were placed incorrectly or found out later. But there's one, and I don't understand why there's three different references here, unless those liens are there. Maybe we issued them and they really need to be released, but anyway, that's my only thought on that. That's right.
So it's, yes, I think what you're referencing is the other two, just for mechanics and to need to be released.
So there's no question.
Right. However, it's just, as I understand it, just clean up, not, you know, there's one.
Yeah, Kathy Stacey.
There's only two liens recorded in my office, two. I don't know why you guys are saying three, because there's two under Josephine Ardell and Ardell. They're same, same person. There are two. I don't know where this third lien is coming from. So that's why I asked you, give me a book and a page, because the only things I have under her name, her name, are two.
Let's, let's do this, if you don't mind. Yeah, if you don't mind, we're gonna take care of the lien that, that's concentrated on what we've talked about. The other two, we can bring up later. So.
Well, I think we should just.
Well, it should be really in non-public.
Not what, as, for delivery lease?
Well, the release on itself, of the, the main one, we can do in public and just get disposed of that as we, as we wanted to vote on it. The other two, we'll, we'll deal with. There's no, in this motion, it just says lien. Doesn't say liens.
It refers to three different book and pages.
Yeah.
Right. It's just saying that there are three, but approve the lien release. It's not plural.
It just should be liens related, because if we're referencing three different books and pages, that's three separate. You know what I suggest at the present moment, that we move to table this motion, so in the interim, we can look up, because I don't know off the top of my head which book and page correspond to which, so.
Let's table it.
And then I'll just, I have the registry of deeds. Thank you, Kathy. Avis, great. I'm gonna look up the book and pages at the moment, and we can confirm. It was my understanding originally, there were three liens. Kathy, you're saying there's two. Well, we could, we have three different books and pages, so it should be pretty easy to track down. But I think, let me just look it up quickly as we go along.
All right, so why don't we make the motion to table, so we can move on.
I move to, yes, to, I guess, move this motion to the end of the agenda, or table it, or this portion.
So, motion's been made to move or table, so later? Seconded? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All aye. Okay, so we're gonna move that. All right, let's move on to Department Corrections, inmate, inmate administrative transfer.
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated May 9, 2023 pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 3-Dash-B, Collins, Ben, Warner, for transferring an inmate to Hillsborough County Department of Corrections as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Engineering and Maintenance, Train Scheduled Service Agreement.
I move to approve the Train Scheduled Service Agreement. Authorize the chair to sign all this, all necessary documents as recommended.
Oh, my apologies. We are not quite ready for that. There was a last-minute change that came through yesterday afternoon. If we could please put it off until next week.
Table for next week. Second. All those in favor say aye?
Thank you.
Two weeks. Only two weeks, dude.
So we're moving to table, two weeks. All right, we're gonna go to Finance Office, TV Equipment Finance.
Move to approve the TV Equipment Finance.
Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Human Resources, Purdy and Nursing Manager Pay Rates.
Yes, I move to approve the Purdy and Nursing Manager RN pay rate, $41.16. The Purdy and Nursing Manager open pay rate, $38.40.
Not on the seconded. Is there any discussion? I have just one quick question, Chuck, if you don't mind. The increase reflected in the new budget or?
Purdy and.
Purdy and is a block of monies. That's what it's, it's Purdy and. Yeah, it is a block of monies, but it's easy. Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll follow.
Move to allow personnel policy, so I acknowledge February 3, initial order, to do so, May 12, 2023, May 26, recommended.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not, I hope you got this. Yes.
Yes. Move to approve the Motivate, Motivate Need Program from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2023. I find in a memo dated May 10, 2023, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended, assuming that there's.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not. Coyle?
Yes.
Godu?
Yes.
I move to approve an exception request to personnel policies, dash, three, new appointment rate for long-term care employee, LBS, recommended by the Director.
Motion's been made and seconded. Scott?
Say that this, Scott, Scott's medical position has been open for a long. Critical need, yes.
Coyle?
Yes.
That takes us to Podcast Launch Outline. Discussion.
So I'm sure, as you know, Autumn has, is preparing for the first, you know, launch of the podcast. We brought it up for the board, what she envisioned. She just gave you an outline of what that first podcast would be. She was looking to have like one or two commissioners on that podcast. It just kinda outlines in the times, keeping it to 30 minutes, and she's broken down kinda the timelines on that, on the back of how long each segment would take in discussion purposes, and kinda what the host questions would be, so that you would be able to respond and now kinda get your thought process there to respond to some of that information. So she is ready, she will know more probably next week. I think it's gonna be the second week of May, if I'm not mistaken, that she is earmarking the podcast go. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, we are in May. What am I thinking here? Yeah, I apologize for that. I think maybe the week of the 22nd or the 29th, because we moved some offices around. That's what I'm getting front on. So she's ready, she's getting ready to launch, but she wanted to give each of the commissioners an outline of what it would look like and what she would be asking, and if you had any concerns about it, to let us know. But if not, and then if someone, we just reach out to Autumn and let her know who wants to take part in it, and she will be more than happy to then reach out to you personally.
Right. Any other further discussion? Any of the department heads at all have any questions about, or in the discussion mode? If not, we'll be talking about it more. From the record, we have, Pat Conway has joined us this week. So we're on to long-term care services, adult medical daycare.
Yes, I move to approve an adult medical picture plan dated May 8, 2023, Easter Seals, New Hampshire, additional point, JT.
Not on the seconded. Any discussion?
Getting more requests for the, we're getting more requests for adult medical daycare. Is that because of more outreach? What do you think it's from?
I, I think, especially for Easter Seals, they moved from their day program to a full, full day program. So before it was just mornings, now they're offering a full day. So I think that has also assisted and increased. Also staffing, they were able to hire more staff to increase their number of participants in their program. And of course, transportation's been an issue, but they have, they're working with a couple vendors to help with transportation. So I think all of that combined and, you know, just more momentum with individuals going back to work, needing to place loved ones in these programs, so that there's flexibility to go back to work.
Thank you.
For the discussion, if not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, break department heads. And I'm gonna let Pat Conway, since she came in a little bit later. I don't know what her schedule is like. She's typically busy in the morning there, but.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. Things are going pretty well here. We're super busy as usual. I really don't have anything new to report, other than we're just plugging away, doing our thing here, but things are going relatively well. We do have some interviews set up for our open positions. We did make a job offer to an attorney who has about six years of experience. She's out of state. So she's, she's looking at how she can get up here and just the logistics of that. And her husband's also trying to find a job up here. So we're hoping that will work out, because she's got a lot of experience and would be a great addition to the team. But we continue to interview for the open lead position, as Attorney Alice will be leaving the office at the end of June. So that's where we are at.
Thank you, Pat. Kathy Stacey. Morning.
Good morning. So I just sent a text message to Commissioner Coyle and Commissioner Godu. You are absolutely right. There are three, because there's multiple versions of the person's name, so I apologize. You are absolutely right. There are three. Those are all three here recorded. Other than that, it's, you know, we're, we're plugging ahead. We had our meeting with our, we had only one absent from our subcommittee meeting, which is great. We gave them a great tour. They were here for quite a bit. They supported the, the budget, and it was smooth sailing. And other than that, things are same old, same old. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I'm gonna go to Jude Gates.
Good morning. All's well in facilities this week. We're also, like everyone else, very busy. Situation normal. Getting some annual work done. Storm drains are being cleaned out. Audubon came out this morning. She was here at about 5:45, doing a walk-through of the fields, looking for the endangered bird. I don't have a report yet, but I understand that they did see two or three potential breeding pairs, but they didn't find the nests. So we'll just have to wait and see how that, that plays out. They're lovely people. So I'm sure, you know, one way or another, we'll figure out what we're dealing with. We did get the groundwater discharge permit, so that we can run the test on well number four when the time comes. DES has come through with that next step. There's other projects that are, you know, ERV and CARLO building, et cetera, et cetera. All's well.
Okay, thank you, Jude.
Thank you.
Jason Smith.
Good morning, Commissioners. Echoing what Commissioner Coyle mentioned this morning, that the CDC and CMS are finally following suit with the end of the public health emergency around COVID, SARS-CoV-2. So with that being said, we're gonna see some changes happening here in the nursing home. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Human Resources to talk about the mask mandate, to go over our policy to align more closely with the new guidance that's been issued. So the future, we may not wear masks coming down the pike, so that will be very, very nice for the staff and also for the residents with caregiving. Assisted living, we followed suit with the CMS guidance. However, New Hampshire has ended their emergency a bit ago, so we're finally following suit with assisted living as well with staff. In addition to that, we will be having a vaccination booster clinic on May 23rd and the 25th and the 26th for those individuals that are interested. We have Friend Services Alliance here, our compliance partner, just to provide one of our reviews. So they're taking a deep dive and auditing our processes, ensuring that we're following the rules of participation for CMS and also the HEP 803, New Hampshire Regulations for Nursing Homes. In addition to that, we will be celebrating National Nursing Home Week next week, starting on Mother's Day. So we have a lot of fun events for family members, residents, and staff throughout the week. And I just wanna say thank you, Commissioners, for coming next week on Thursday after the Commissioners' meeting, just to say thank you to the caregivers and the staff that support the community on a daily basis. So we really appreciate that. In addition to that, we will be hosting a memorial service on Monday, May 22, for the residents that have passed away from our community over the past year. We'll be having family members attend, staff, and of course, friends and relatives of the ones that have passed. And also in the packet that I provided you, our monthly newsletter was included. I appreciate your time. Have a good day.
Thank you, Jason. I'm gonna go to Sharra, Seos, and Catherine Mann.
Good morning. We did have our subcommittee meeting this, last week went very well. We did have two subcommittee members that did not show to our meeting. It's kinda disappointing, but we, they reviewed our budget, looked very well. I just wanna give out a shout-out to Jason Henry. I know yesterday was a tough day for you. You guys handled it very well. I'm glad that everything worked out with all your people that worked there. And it's good that, you know, we all work together as a team, and, you know, I'm very proud of the work that he did downstairs at his correctional offices. It was, it was a great day for the county. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Shar. All right, Jason Henry.
Morning, everybody. A couple things. Opiate Abatement Committee, we met this past week. And part of the discussion was on that reimbursement grant that is out for MAT. And initially, it was up to reimburse up to $5 million. It's been moved, the deals have moved to up to $10 million, which is great, because if you look at the counties, what they're putting in for is closer to $10 million on reimbursement. So that's a big help. We picked up our new cruiser, which we just have to get registered and the lights and all that kinda good stuff going. Now, yesterday, yes, so we had a inmate-led drugs. We had to take away from them. And during that process, two correctional staff were exposed. Three nurses out of the five, three had to be Narcaned. One of my lieutenants had to be Narcaned twice in here and in the ambulance. I don't know, thank God that nobody passed. Then we had three other inmates that had to go out also, so eight ambulance rides. Brentwood PD, Brentwood Fire did a fantastic job. The Sheriff's Department, the minute we called for, with the drugs, their detectives came down. The Chair came down, Deputy Sheriff came down, Chris Bashaw, his day off, came down. They did a lot of work. They brought their dog in. They called Exeter and had their dog come in, so there was mutual aid going on with there. The lockdown of the facility, I mean, ambulance after ambulance, and then it took me all day long to find a company to be able to clean up a fentanyl exposure, because it was in a large area in our processing, which we shut that area down. Amazingly, people didn't realize you actually needed DEA certificate to be able to clean up fentanyl. And finally found a company in Massachusetts that could do it. The ones in New Hampshire now are scrambling to get their licenses to be able to do this coming up. They were here till about 3:00 AM in the morning, doing all that cleaning last night, so that's, I'm glad I was able to get somebody in. When we shut down processing, the Sheriff's Department quickly called all the dispatches around the area, police departments, and put them on divert, not to come here as best as possible. And they did. Hillsborough County and Stratford County opened their doors to us to. Hillsborough County and Stratford County opened their doors to us too. If we did have arrests that need to be done, they would take them in for us. So there was just a lot of cooperation that happened during this incident. Dave Costino was here thirty years, has never experienced a mass casualty like that was experienced here yesterday. And I like to say this is going to be a one-off. I don't know. These type of exposures are happening more and more and more. These people are bringing things in with them. And when they plume out and people have to still put hands on, because we're still our job to save their lives and those kinds of things. This exposure can happen to any of us. Police on the streets are exposed to it every single day. We have, property comes in all the time. I know Sheriff's working on a machine that you can look at property before we open it and see what it is for, for drugs. But it can happen to any one of us. I just want to say be cautious. Like if you pick up somebody's wallet and you look through it to see whose ID it is, as being a good Samaritan, you don't know what's in it. And if you touch fentanyl with your hands or get in you, you could have an issue with maybe Narcan'd or lose your life. This stuff is dangerous and it is out there and we are inundated here in this county. And again, not overly religious, but I will thank God or anybody who's out there to what they did to save our staff and lieutenant being Narcan'd by another staff member, because it was scary when he called for help immediately and was collapsing and a staff member caught him and then gave him Narcan. So I just want to thank everybody and everybody's support. The department has reached out, called and everything else and looked into everything. Thank you. And we're still doing, cleaning up and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jason. I'm glad everything worked out well and we didn't have any major issues. But like you said, we don't know if this is a one-up, but a learning experience for sure. So thank you very much. I'm going to go to Nick Carson.
Thank you for the warm welcome back. It was a very busy conference. I attend all the sessions when I go to these conferences. So I was attending right up to the point in time, getting back to hotel, then off to the shuttle to the airport to come back. So very good conference, there are over six thousand attendees. Lots of good stuff come down the pipeline with future versions and going over maybe ways that we might be under utilizing currently some pieces of the current product that we're using for Munis. And looking forward to implementing some of those new things and especially around financial reporting. So just to piggyback on what Jason Henry had said about five million to ten million at the state level for that new RGA round of, of grant applications. Rockland County, I think, Jason, we were one of the higher ones on the list at over two million. So we'll, we'll see if, if what our, you know, if they just boil it down to it's an even, you know, one tenth reach county or if we get closer to what we actually put in for, which would be again, closer to two million. So that's good news. And this basically for reimbursement for the current and prior two years, basically. And also I got word from Gopher that they approved our thing for county emergency equipment related to COVID as well. So that's a little bit more than seventy thousand that we'll be getting for that. So this has to go before Governor Council, so I'm guessing I'll be the June meeting for that. Again, this is really busy with subcommittee meetings. I haven't had a chance to talk with them yet, but hopefully Jesse and Katie covered all those and, and things went well.
Yes.
So.
They've done a good job.
And I think the only modification I've heard currently is just to the Sheriff's Office budget as far as for subcommittee.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, and I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit later, there's a couple of flags and so, okay.
But good to be back.
Yeah, welcome back. We thank you for having me here. Allison.
Hi, we're just super busy right now because as you know, annual open enrollment is coming down the pike. So there'll be communications that will be going out next week. The ODDs are there, executives will receive the packets for all the employees that they have to disperse and have them sign based on DOL, confirming that employees have been given the rate sheets. We have to have them sign for it, acknowledging that they've received it. That's going on, we're making some changes, you know, we have to upload and do our chrono system with all the new information that's updated in there. And I'm getting all the contracts in from all the vendors at the moment. So that's coming in piecemeal and then all it comes in in waves. I did have my salary, excuse me, my department's subcommittee, overall it went very well. While there was a question around, I think it was a general question around training and conferences that ended up going more globally across the county, it wasn't really directed at me. So my budget was approved, so I'm happy, you know, at the subcommittee level, so I was very happy, but sweating it out for a few minutes when that topic came up. But overall, I think it went very well and we are extremely busy because we also are prepping for PCNs that'll have to roll out for July one, contractual things and stuff like that. But I will, sending out an email to all ODDs, we need to have everybody's evaluations in from all their employees in their departments by the second week of June. Even though you may have somebody that has an evaluation the week after, at the tail end of June, you will have enough information to craft the evaluation and complete it. But we are, we have a lot of moving pieces, if the budget's approved with the COLA and some other stuff. We need all that information into the system for this past year so that it won't impact payroll and having to do a lot of manual calculations and stuff like that. So that'll be coming out and I'll identify what outstanding evaluations you have. Kathy's smiling because she's always a month or two ahead of her evaluation. So I have no doubt we won't worry about that. But yes, and I will, I thank you so much. I know it's a lot to ask of you, these evaluations for some of the larger departments, but we just need the information now. And that's all I have, thank you.
I have a question.
Allison, now twice we've heard about this discussion about conferences. Can you give us a synopsis of what the concern was with the delegation over our conferences?
I think the conferences was some departments have more money allocated in their conference line versus other. And then there was about mileage, something to do with the mileage came up. And we did talk a little bit about that, Jesse tried to clarify that while you and I may be going to for the NHAC, that comes out of the mileage line. But like if you had to travel to go to your conference, you need to travel to get to the airport or something like that. That's rolled up into your conference line. And I don't think one of the members on the panel, my panel was very clear about that, didn't understand that. So that could cause that conference line to be a little bit more yes, excuse me, inflated, because some of conferences, like if we, even if we go to Primax, there still is that mileage that you're going, driving up to Primax, you know, driving up to Portsmouth. There will be the mileage from here to Portsmouth or whatever, where you're traveling, there could be. And that's rolled up in the conference training line. So I think that was it. So I think the question was more global about how the, how it is all totaling up and maybe how he could understand what the breakout of that was, but I don't know how you would do that. And Jesse questioned that, I'm not sure that we could define a breakout of that. So I, it ended up in the finance realm and I was very happy to move it over there.
Welcome home, Chuck.
I was very happy to move it over into that area.
There is no way to break out the actual expenses. Budget, but reporting.
Yeah.
We can use project codes.
So it was clarifications, it wasn't the direction of we ought to be doing something different.
No, no, I think there was a little bit of a confusion of how some travel money was done and stuff like that, yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
I'd like to.
Bring that back on the table.
So I'm, I'll make the motion, then I'll do the next one. I moved to authorize a settlement on means on real property filed with Rockham County Registry of Deeds Book five three eight three page twenty-nine sixty-two, book five fifty-four thirty-six, page fourteen oh nine, book fifty-four seventy-three, page nine ninety-one for approximately seventy-six thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. And authorize the write-off of the remainder of the balance and approve the lien release. Means the releases once payment is received.
Second. Most is remaining second, further discussion.
Sure, so on the first booking page, that's fifty-three eighty-three, page twenty-nine sixty-two. That property is playing named Sweden Wainner. That the lien was placed on December third, two thousand twelve. However, prior to the lien being placed, that property was transferred out of our Josephine's well, Welsh to AI Welsh. And he purchased that on for eight two thousand three, book four thousand, page seventeen ninety.
Okay, quick question right there for a minute. So there's a, there was a transfer of property while there was a lien?
No, prior to, because the lien was placed, the transfer occurred in two thousand three, the lien was placed in two thousand twelve.
Okay.
With respect to the second land, the land on Main Street book, that is the lien was placed relative to book fifty-four thirty-six, fourteen oh nine, that is the lien on that property. That is the one that we are dealing with, with respect to the upcoming. With respect to book fifty-four seventy-three, page nine ninety-one, that those are land located off Morrison Road and Paramin Road. That property, at least, I, I didn't confirm with Paramin because it's a little difficult in, in my time. But what I can see what happened collectively is that Joseph Welsh was that property, it was an executor that was in his name. It was transferred to Kenneth, Kenneth Emerson on March eighth, two thousand one, at book thirty-four forty-seven, page four thirty-five. And the lien was placed on eight twenty-three, two thousand thirteen. So I feel comfortable with respect to the first and third that those leans were improperly placed after the transfer took her. So we can release those to the extent that it puts a, it puts a blight on the title improperly.
Further discussion, I know, you talked about the amount that the attorney was retaining, may have been different.
I thought it was three thousand dollars additional, I guess it's a thousand dollars more than what we expected. I don't know that we have any opportunity to argue about that. Seems expensive for what they're doing, I should have been a lawyer.
Okay, but yeah, I'm okay with it. All right, so I think we're, I think we're all set now, so, okay. So now on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Or Allison, okay. So I'm going to go to new business, does anyone have any new business?
I, last week or the week before, Leila expressed some concerns with us regarding her job duties and how it matches up with the job description. And I would like to follow up on that and address it. And as part to start with, I'd just like to have a meeting with her and review the documents that we have and she's, and try to come up with some suggestions and see where we're at. So my suggestion, I'm suggesting that I'll have a, a discussion with her and then report back. Or unless you want to handle it a little differently, but I don't think we should ignore the question.
So for me, I, I really will see this actually being an HR issue. I'd feel a little bit more comfortable if HR took control of that versus an individual commissioner. No, you know, due respect, I just think it's easier that way. What age, I mean, I go, I see it as an HR function. And then she can report back to us, but that's my opinion.
Well, that's fine. I, I reviewed the documents and it appears to me that there are some things under regular duty that are not on her job description. For starters, so I, I think those need to be addressed. I don't know where the, those duties ought to go, but I suppose I could just share my notes with you and you can go over.
That'd be helpful.
But I, I, I really do think that there's some things that should be shuffled around as to specifically surrounding purchasing. Because it seems that Leila has, has to do all of the purchasing duties, including putting it up on public purchase and, and, and collecting the RFPs and RFQs. And, and like, there's a lot, there's a lot surrounding and it's all got to do with purchasing. And I, it would seem to me that that's not a function of our, and not only does it seem to me, it, it specifically in her job description, the current job description, there's no mention of that. And I don't think there should be, and there were a couple of other things, but I can go over what, and then you can take a look. And okay, that's, I'm happy to handle it that way.
And to your point, Commissioner, those, that, that process is extraordinarily time consuming. That's what I had mentioned last week. So if there's a way to sort of distribute it a little bit, I think that's a great idea, like to distribute it a little. And instead of one person taking the brunt of the whole, maybe we can put that within, you know, it's a smaller piece that will reduce the overall impact.
All right, so I'll have a discussion with Allison and then you can decide how.
And the PvP too, don't forget the PvP's that we did. So I'm, I'll pull that too, because that should be part of it.
So is there any other new business that anyone wants to just go?
I, I think we just, the only thing I would say is to the, just to follow up, you would ask for legal, we were agreeing to have a legal council review the attachment, and so we did get the results back from Primax. They had no comments except to note the limits of their liability to the extent that we're dealing with hazard risk. So anyway, we have the green light, so that was very good. It's nice to get that, that, you know, that confirmation.
For sure, yeah. Very good. Any other new business? All right, everyone, then we're going to move on to public comments. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak at this time? I don't see anybody there, so we're, we're going to go into non-public folks. And I'm going to let Commissioner Coyle bring us into non-public. We have non-public.
I don't, I don't.
So we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. All right, okay, everybody, hope you have a good day. Hey, not bad, not even night there.
So what time is our grievance?